Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is almost seven o'clock. We've got a few seconds here before we start our study session agenda tonight. Well, it is the appointed hour. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for Monday, May nine, two thousand and twenty-two. The items for discussion tonight are twofold. We've got the first item review of the six-year Transportation Improvement Program. And for this, we'll have our Capital Projects Division Manager Ted Hill. Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ted Hill, Capital Projects Division Manager. And as alluded, I am going to be talking about the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan. So without any ado, and it's the six year from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight, so the next six years. So I want to take credit for projects we are going to be completing, either have been or will be by the end of the summer. So first on the list, Silicon Sidewalks, that one is right now wrapping up with the streetlights being installed. Yes.
A little closer.
Little. I've had a lot of feedback, sorry.
Okay.
Hearing an echo in the background. Maybe it's just me. And then the next Silicon Sidewalks project is the south side of the road, which we've advertised and have a contractor. You'll be seeing a contract soon coming through council. Fifty-nine to have sidewalks, that's our Transportation Improvement Board project. That is from Bridgeport Way to a hundredth on the east side, should be starting that soon as well. Two thousand and twenty-one street lighting, we are like everybody waiting on product to show up, but we do have a contractor underway. South Comway overlay, a few snap foods right now with Wash Dot, but we should hopefully be out to bid this summer and get it underway and constructed. Phillips Road sidewalk, that's our CDBG project, that'll be the west side between Aggett and Onyx. And then we do have a contractor on board for that. And then the Gravelly Lake Drive, JBLM Phase One should be wrapping up here by June. And I want to take credit for it, even though we're moving right into Phase Two, which just actually started today with the bypass, so very, very busy time. And I do have, oh, I hit it more than once. No, good. At least one of the projects is under construction, the Silicon North Side, so a little bit of corner piece work to the left-hand side of the screen, you can see beforehand, obviously, the right-hand side you're seeing very close to being finished. Streetlights are going in right now. And again, pictures were a thousand words, but it's the only one we have wrapping up, so hopefully by next year, I'll bring a couple of the ones that are finishing this summer, just so you have some photos. So projects to be added to the tip. We have Boston Avenue, John Dower Road and a hundred and twelfth Street. Let me give you a little visual on that. The orange lines are the projects we are adding this year, which are just the three, John Dower, Hundred and Twelfth and Boston. And all the blue are the ones that we are completing this summer. Boston, I think, is the only road that we missed in the Springbook area last year, so we're adding it this year. John Dower, we are actually applying for a Safe Routes to School grants to finish the sidewalks on the east side of the road up to seventy-fifth. And a hundred and twelve, we just applied for PSRC funds for an overlay from South Comway to Steel Street. Which, again, important that they're on our tip, so that we can apply for some of these grants. So a little close up. So again, Boston Avenue, basically the whole stretch from I five over to McCord. Current estimate is three hundred and eight thousand dollars, three hundred and eight thousand, and that's today's money, just so you know. This is the only one we're not applying for right now, so I have not projected out anything yet, because we don't know when we might go to construction. And John Dower Road, again, seventy-eighth to seventy-fifth would complete the sidewalks from the school up to seventy-fifth. And right now, we're at a two hundred and forty thousand dollar estimate for today's funds, and it's minor widening curb gutter illumination, our typical road widening. And this controller doesn't like. Uh, no, it's, well, I mean, number-wise, it's not very far, but it's quite, quite a stretch. It's probably more like four blocks if I had to, but it's only two, two street streets, yes. Yeah, and this one's only one side of the street, so you got to take that into account as well. And we already have right-of-way, and this. All right, I'm doing perfect. Very young. Hundred and twelfth, South Comway to Steel Street. We just applied for a grant, so we put in the, right now, the grant we applied for is two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six for funds to be expended. So we're at one point two million for a complete mill and fill of that road. Which is quite a distance, and it's quite wide with those shoulders as well. So this year, we will be patching some of this road to help it last until two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, as it's starting to seem somewhere in terror. And again, the map, so you have any questions or?
Well, there's probably all sorts of questions about any of the items on the tip. Mr. Anderson.
I have a question regarding the, I realize it's grant funding request, but on a hundred and twelfth, it's, I've been familiar with that road for over forty years. I've never seen a pedestrian on. You know, I suspect there are bicyclists that use it to cut across, but it's got a very wide shoulder. What's that, what do we get for one point two million dollars? I mean, it's, part of it's on an easement from the base, they own both sides of the road, you can't park there, you can't stop. So we've got other, other places in Lakewood that people are waiting for improvements on. It just doesn't seem to add much to our transportation equation.
Hundred and twelfth is a very important route, and I've used it for about thirty years myself. It's one of three ways to get around the base if you're not a military person. And it's the way I come to work every day, I have seen pedestrians on it. That shoulder provides an extra capacity for the right turn for people going around Spanaway Loop. I've seen it backed up into the shoulders past the turnpocket. I, I do agree, there's a very wide shoulder on the north side. I think I've seen it used during the old airshows they used to have.
I'm thinking more of the, you know, top dressing of, you know, two inches asphalt or whatever would seem to add to the equation of keeping that open as an arterial, but the curb gutter sidewalk, the drainage for the base.
Councilman Anderson, if I may follow up on what Mr. Hill is saying, this project is strictly a mill and fill. There's no new curb cutter and sidewalk being installed in here, partly because of what you're illustrating. Part of it is an easement that goes through JBLM property. It is a primary connector for the folks who live in the Spanaway area to get into the city. It is used quite heavily. There are major construction companies which we benefit from who have businesses right there. This project, we applied for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar overlay grant, a restoration grant from PSRC. I'm hopeful that comes through. The remainder of the funds will come out of the, the general or the city's funds in order to accomplish the work. It would not be that expensive, except for the fact that the price of asphalt has gone through the roof, as you, as you know, from some of the projects that we've been getting. It also has a contingency in that to make sure that if asphalt prices go up higher, that our funds that we've claimed we need will cover it.
So you're saying it's not curbs, gutters.
It is not.
That's what I was.
Sidewalk, no. We did look to see if we could widen the shoulder a little to make it safer, because it does narrow down about halfway through for bicyclists. It's not looking favorable, but as we get into more design, we'll see if we can squeeze it a little bit further out to make it better for bicyclists.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Boki.
Thank you for the present, thank you for the presentation. So we're adding Boston Avenue, but we added last year a number of other ones, and without me looking through the whole thing. Is, is adding Boston Avenue just, did I, did you say could just to complete all the other stuff that Sound Transit will be doing, or can you explain that?
Correct. Boston was one on the Sound Transit list that was not on our tip. Other than that, we had McCord, Chicago, San Francisco, we had all that added last year. So this is the only road we missed.
Okay, so they put it in their plan, but we didn't have it in ours. Correct. Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions. So the non-motorized transportation update is scheduled for two thousand and twenty-three and not two thousand and twenty-two?
Well, it's a six-year update, so it goes two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight.
Again, I apologize for stepping in.
Sure.
The non-motorized plan, which the mayor is referring to, we are requesting additional funds in two thousand and twenty-two from the carry forward, so that we can actually start and complete the work in twenty-two, maybe early two thousand and twenty-three. We've already been speaking with some consultants, we have one we want to hire, we have still, and we have a budget for all that work. We're just waiting for the final budget authorization to move forward with it.
So a second general question of the projects that we pass the councilmatic bonds for. We know that there's scheduled study, or it's not study, but the design and then construction typically. Is there any value in some of those, and I'm thinking of the Mount Tacoma one, I'll bring up a reason in a minute, why we couldn't advance design money and outsource it to one of the many consultants we use, get repaid that in due course, but at least get the work done earlier than contemplated if we could outsource it? Is there value in doing that? I'm thinking because of maybe grant monies coming down the road. I know this is budgeted with our councilmatic bonds. But it seems to me by expediting some of the design work, we might do ourselves a favor.
Mayor Anderson, excuse me, I apologize.
It's all good.
Mayor Will, and apologies. It's a good question. However, I will point out that when we did our budgets for those projects, we did those budgets anticipating internal staff to do the design. Our cost for doing design range between five to eight percent, and outside consultant will be twelve to fifteen percent. So using them early to do the design will cost us more money. Now, if you're going to do the design, I highly recommend that you put the project out as soon as you get it done. Because if it sits there on the shelf and it ages, not all designs age well, because we deal with the State Department of Transportation and ABD specifications. So if there's any changes in those specifications, we have to go back and revisit the design and the specs and potentially spend more money to bring them back up to the current standard. All the projects that are proposed and are being bond funded, they really are not grant projects. That's the reason why we're using the TDD bond funds to do them. They're, they just, none of the grant funding sources we go to will fund those projects.
And the only reason I bring it up is because I spent an hour and a half today at a Pierce Transit board meeting, listening to the federal lobbyists and then folks talking about the state legislative update with regard to all the transportation funding that could be coming down the pike. And I'm sure we're going to be on top of all the opportunities, but they seem to indicate that there's just, you know, lots of potential funding opportunities that will be available, so that's the reason for the question.
I appreciate the question. I too am looking forward to when all this tidal wave of money comes our way. But what we keep seeing is that they are for specialty mega projects that are coming out. It doesn't seem to be a lot of it trickling down to the local jurisdictions, to be frank, which is disappointing, because we're the ones who need to.
Right, okay. Mr. Anderson.
If you just have regional council level, it appears that, you know, while they expect it to come in buckets, and it's going to be a percentage plus up in many cases with respect to surface transportation, say, well, we might have, a couple of years, we might have a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty percent of what we did before. But I haven't heard anything regarding surface transportation that would lead me to believe that it was going to be direct funding to cities and counties. It would just be a plus up of, you know, system that we've been living with and begging from. So unless we had, you know, it just gets farther down the list.
No, it's just a matter of keeping our ear to the ground. The woman today was chatting about Complete Streets program monies and some others that tend to be more local than large projects, but you know, who knows how it all sorts out, and I'm sure you folks are on top of it, so.
We have been very successful with the TIB on Complete Streets, as you, as you know. We are constantly kind of just queuing up in the staff mind, different projects, and we think would be suitable for future applications, that we get feedback from them. And it seems to be working fairly well. As soon as more funds, we really kind of expected PSRC to get an influx of money. But it turns out that the monies that we're all competing for this year are in the same general ballpark as what we have in the past. There's just a lot more projects. And there are more costs, so they actually won't spread as far as in the past.
Mr. Anderson. One other thing, this is really out there. How much would it, how much effort would it be to come up with a cost estimate for the Silicon Lake Bridge? Because there's a bridge bucket in the, in the Infrastructure Act, and there's going to, I hear there's going to be a high priority placed on things that can be done quickly where they have designs, so I guess see it as a step, wouldn't estimate of the cost, then what would it come? What would it take to get to a level where you designed it for funding purposes as opposed to construction purposes?
The challenge we have with the Lake Silicon Bridge on the interlock and road is it's in fine shape. It gets inspected on a regular basis. In fact, Pierce County divers went out there, I think it was last week, to inspect it underwater. Those funds for the bridges, they're really being set up, and from what we've seen, they're all set up for the failing bridges. And there's a number of them across the state and across the nation. So to take our Silicon Lake Bridge, which is perfectly functional, still works, it's not failing. I mean, would we like to see a little bit better? Yeah, but then we're having a bigger conversation about the roads coming up to it on those sides. And what that's going to take, and I remind the council that we have thirty feet of right-of-way, that's all we have out there. And so right now, it's probably not going to do much for us to try and pursue a grant for replacing that bridge.
Yeah, you know, we often, I completely hear what you say. We often think about access to lakes, and that's one of the only opportunities folks really have to, to walk through a neighborhood area and access a lake, so I mean, the hope someday would be to either expand the sidewalk on the existing side of the bridge, kind of like we do with Freedom Bridge years ago, where they extend, expanded the pedestrian capability of the structure. To be able to get at least one curved, protected, three-foot walkway or something for people to walk down there, because it is, it's a beautiful area to walk if you don't get killed. You know, so, speaking of craziness on the road going to the bridge, I've had three neighbors tell me of three separate accidents at Mount Tacoma and Meadow in the last three weeks. So it's either traffic, obviously knucklehead stuff going on, as people speed through motor, or not motor, but the metal road, not knowing that there's a stop sign or not even watching that there's a stop sign. But is there something we can do with that, or at least down the road, plant a seed on the design side, that maybe that's a roundabout opportunity? Who knows, when you redo that road in two thousand and twenty-six and design it in two thousand and twenty-five, but there's, it's a consistent challenge on that particular intersection.
I took a look at the accident history on that intersection with a little heads up. It ranges between two and six accidents per year, on average, really around two. This year, so for the last twelve months, there have been two collision accidents and one which is exchange information, so it's three. They, one of our traffic engineers has, over the last couple of years, made sure that all the sightlines have been clear. That advanced warning signs, about the stop signs have been put up, that the, the stop bars have been moved so that they're more readily apparent. And he's currently having some new signs installed that's a stop ahead, not just the round one that shows the stop of the arrow. But I think it is worthwhile, as we get into the design in twenty-five, to take a look and see if we have enough room right there to put a roundabout.
Or a small one or something, you know, like you have it to COVID and maybe something.
I, I think along the lines of on Veterans Drive on Lake City Boulevard. So I, I am not a big fan of those little postage stamp sized ones that people drive over. I want something that catches their attention and actually slows them down. If we have enough room, it'd be a good place for one.
It would be.
Because that is a straight, straight corridor. And the disadvantage, or the advantage of rebuilding the roads like we've been doing, is they are a great ride, and they're beautiful, and they're fun. And the disadvantage is they're a great ride and they're beautiful, and people like to go fast on them, I can't slow them down. So we have to always be thinking about traffic control when we're doing our design to slow people down.
Very good. Any other questions or comments for the good of the order? Looks good. Thank you. Appreciate it. And next, we have a review of the Shoreline Restoration Plan updates, just the updates. And for this, I believe we have Tiffany Spear, who will join us virtually, our planning manager, Ms. Spear.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Tiffany Spear, Long Region Strategic Planning Manager. Yes, as the mayor just mentioned, this is an overview of two proposed amendments to the two thousand and nineteen Shoreline Restoration Plan, which was adopted by resolution along with the latest updates to the Shoreline Master Program several years ago. So I will share my screen. There were two ordinances adopted in two thousand and nineteen, both seven eleven and seven eighteen, to adopt the Shoreline Master Program, which is what's required by state statute, and then the accompanying restoration plan. And within the ordinance adopting the restoration plan, you'll see at the top of this slide that the Planning Commission was directed by the council to hold a meeting annually, at which reports will be provided by organizations and individuals who have conducted restoration activities within the city. And the commission shall determine whether to recommend amendments to the restoration plan for council consideration. So those updates have been held since the restoration plan was adopted several years ago. And up to this point, there has not been any recommended amendments coming from that presentation, but this year there are. The Planning Commission held its annual meeting on March second, and then as part of that, and the following public hearing on April sixth, there were two amendments suggested by the city for county, our commission review. Public comment was received during the public hearing. Most of them, however, were not directly related to these two amendments. But they were responded to at the Planning Commission level by the city. What you see on the rest of the screen here are the two proposed amendments, one of which would remove under section four point two of the Restoration Plan subsection eighteen. This relates to financial support of the Pierce Conservation District Stream Team. And the reason that that was suggested be removed is because the city does not participate in that annual monitoring program anymore. The Second Amendment is under section seven two of the Restoration Plan, and it's really a, almost a typographical error where there was a paren's left in and a sentence that wasn't intended to be in the plan in the first place that was then removed. So these are the two amendments that were up for review by the count, by the commission, excuse me, on April sixth at the hearing. There were a number of individuals, as I mentioned, that did provide comment, many of which were not directly related to the application. However, what you'll see here in L. Schmouter's email and live comments from April sixth is that they, he, excuse me, wanted to request that there be advising the council that goal U nine needs to be implemented in order to assure benefits are possible from the Restoration Plan. This was responded to in part by an outside of the public hearing process email from the city manager. And then the commission also took that comment into account as part of their public hearing review. One of the things that came out of the review and response back to the members of the public who provided comment was just this overview of the various federal and state acts and programs and regulations that govern water resources within the city of Lakewood, and most of them are outside of the control of the city. So the idea was simply to explain that there is only so much the city has authority over and that it can regulate, and the rest are things that outside parties and other levels of government are in control of. The next steps would be the public hearing at the city council meeting, which is scheduled for next Monday night on these two amendments that the Planning Commission did recommend to you. They had their own ordinance, or their own resolution, two thousand and twenty-two dash O two. And then on June sixth, action is currently scheduled for the city council. So with that, I am happy to take any questions.
Questions of Ms. Spear. So we no longer participate in the annual monitoring program shown in the strikeout, which is or was through Pierce Conservation District. What was the reason for that, just historically? Mr. Bucic. You might as well have a seat there, because we can talk about how much we're all getting some feedback about Waga Lake and what maybe next, since we're talking water, but go ahead.
So the Pierce County Conservation District was approached by the city over twenty years ago to use volunteers and monitor the lakes, certain parameters. Couple of years ago, I asked, at that time, the Engineering Services Manager, I said, okay, so we're coming up for another contract. What do you do with this information? And the answer was nothing. I said, well, why? He says, because there's nothing actionable in the information. So I took a look at the report that we get every year, and I looked at the parameters that are studied. And I don't like paying for something that doesn't have any value. And studying something for the sake of just saying I'm studying it but not doing anything with it, and there's no trends, doesn't make any sense. So we approached the Pierce County Conservation District, we said, look, this doesn't make any sense. We don't want to do it every year. What we want to do is we want to do it every five to ten years. And I've got a long history doing water quality monitoring in my background, working with folks who do it in many different locations. Typically, what you'll do is after about ten, fifteen years, if there's no trends, that's more than enough time for any trends to become apparent. If there are no trends, you change the frequency of the monitoring. So that's what we've done, except for Waha Lake, because we're actively monitoring that to treat it. But on the other lakes that we're doing, we're not going to work with, we're not going to have the volunteers take data a couple of times a year to send it to the lab, to send us the bill to pay for it, when we're not doing anything with it, because it's not actionable data.
If it's not actionable data, does that mean it doesn't have anything helpful with regard to periodic algae blooms that we experience, not just on Waga, but on Silicon? Sometimes the Mill Foil American, so why wouldn't it be actionable with regard to at least keeping on top of the treatment options, either through the lake districts that are already formed for Silicon and American Lake?
So American Lake, the Lake Management District is about aquatic weeds. That's what it's set up to do. And we do an annual survey of the lake every spring to find out where the invasive weeds are coming up. And then we develop a treatment program and have a contractor go out and treat it for that. Algae is a different, algal blooms are different. You may have minor algae blooms depending upon the weather, depending upon the degree the lake has dried up, depending upon whether there's a pollutant source that's coming into it. Waha Lake is a special, unusual lake, and we can talk about that in a moment. But for American Lake, Gravelly Lake, Gravelly Lake is good as it can get. Silicon Lake, that's got historic problems for many years, and the city is not actively involved in the treatment of Silicon Lake. There's a homeowners association that does that. So the only lake really that we've, we're still monitoring is Waha Lake, because we have an active interest in seeing what we can do for treating it. The other lakes, we don't treat. The other lakes, if there was a treatment developed, it would be. it would be primarily by a lake management district like American Lake. But again, that one is not set up for aquatic algae. All the other parameters they've been monitoring, they're stable. They haven't been going up and down radically. There's no trends on them. They're not increasing pollutant loads and not decreasing pollutant load. I will say the one thing though, that you can kind of tease out of it, and that is the searing has been done in the Telecom Woodrook area. If you look at when that started and where those particular nutrient parameters are, I would say if you, if you look at it, you kind of stretch it, you can see that there's a downward trend. So that actually is helping. But beyond that, there's nothing actionable to do with the data.
So but to Waha Lake, then we've got the alum treatment we did, we were hopeful it would last longer than it has. We're looking to do another treatment this year. The expense of the treatment is beyond which we are perhaps comfortable spending money on. So what do we do if and when it has a toxic algae bloom as opposed to a regular algae bloom?
So first off, let me, let me be clear. We had always intended on doing three treatments to Waha Lake. The first two were in twenty twenty. Then we had the option to do twenty twenty one or wait till twenty twenty two. We decided to wait till twenty twenty two to see how the lake reacted. And the lake did have a small algae bloom, a toxic algae bloom in late September.
Right.
And if you recall, last year was a very dry year. It was a very hot year. It was a great year if you like the sun and no rain. But for all the lakes in in Washington State, Western Washington in particular, um, they dried up more, which means it concentrated the phosphorus and the nutrients that the algae would use. And they had late, very late season blooms. So not a huge surprise. So we were planning on doing another treatment this year. We've done some testing. Uh, our consultant contracts are all on board. And our consultants started calling around the applicators who do this for a living. And they said, we've got a little problem. I had heard a few months ago that you could expect a twenty thirty percent increase in price. Okay, we planned for that. We set up a budget accordingly. Um, it's doubled. So in the past, twenty twenty, we were able to do about a hundred forty five thousand dollars per treatment. Right now, they're estimating three hundred and sixteen to three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars for one treatment. And the question is, well, why did it go up so much? Primary source of aluminum comes from Russia. That is been cut off. So even the aluminum poles we put up for our streetlights, they've tripled in price. So we're looking at, well, maybe their concrete pools are now more competitive. So we're going to look to see if the recommendation is, we're going to put those concrete pools everywhere until the price of aluminum comes back down because they're cheaper than the aluminum poles. But getting back to the alum, I had a long conversation with our consultants, the limbologists, the ones who are experts in lake treatment. I asked them, so what happens if we don't treat this year? Well, you run the risk of having more algae blooms. Okay, this lake has had algae blooms for decades. In fact, the algae bloom we had earlier this year, a little unusual, but not a surprise. Uh, it happens sometimes for a different species of algae blooms, not the toxic, because you've cleaned up the water more. So, and you haven't addressed one of the nutrients that it needs. Waha Lake gets its phosphorus from the groundwater table that feeds into it, as well as from the bottom surface sediments. The alum treatment that we use locks the sediments, washes them through the water column, locks them into the bottom. It's got a huge load of phosphorus in that sediment. And the groundwater table that feeds into it also is bringing in the nutrients that phosphorus that it needs. So I asked him what happens. Well, don't treat, go green. That's your risk. So what we're looking, looking to do here is don't treat this year. Let's wait and see if the price of the product that we need actually comes down in price. And then we'll reevaluate next spring. The worst case scenario is that when we do go to treat it, we may have to do two treatments. Uh, one on the same year or maybe one, one year, one the next year. Treating with the lakes isn't like building roads in concrete where you do it once and you walk away. This is a living dynamic system that we're trying to modulate how it reacts to the nutrients that are available to it. My recommendation right now is that we wait. And let's see if the price of aluminum comes down. That's part of the alum, aluminum. Whether other sources in the world come online to help drive the prices down. As I said, there's not a lot of harm of that. We run the risk of having a toxic algae bloom and the signage is still up saying, don't treat the water.
Any questions? Mr. Bucic. And then you go. All right. Well, that's it for the update on the program amendments. I think that concludes that item for tonight. So you're in luck because now we can speed through. You'll note the items tentatively scheduled for next week's regular city council meeting. I won't read through all of them, but you can see them there. And we will turn to reports by the city manager with Mr. Caulfield, who is appearing virtually. Ms. Anderson, do you have a?
On the items tend to be scheduled, one item may need correction. Is that the Washington State Cross Country Meet at Fort Silicon Park? Is it being moved from Tri-Cities where it's been for the last twenty five years? Or is that the Fort Silicon invitation?
It's the invitation. I don't know how that got to that language there. I think Mr. Clark wants to give us an update about the impact economically of the, the region.
I heard, I heard that. So that should be the Fort Silicon invitation, yeah, cross country.
So we can correct that before that goes out.
Duly noted.
He's quite excited to actually give us all a presentation. He's been, you know better than anyone how involved he's been in high school track and. Yeah, so he's, he's excited for his first entree here to tell us all the wonderful lodging tax opportunities we'll have with heads and beds and people buying, you know, burgers and coffee and all sorts of stuff because it's, it's a big deal. So. All right. So Mr. Caulfield, if you're available, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Wayland, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Got a handful of updates here. I'd like to share with you. The first is had a chance to touch bases with the school superintendent late last week to talk about a joint meeting between their board and this body. And, uh, you know, based on schedules and things along those lines, we've identified, um, three potential dates that, um, we're going to look at. One is, uh, June fourteenth, the fifteenth, and then the third one, um, June, June nineteenth. And, um, you know, we talked and, you know, we figured this would be maybe a bit more of an informal meeting, maybe have a, you know, a, a dinner meeting. And really the topic would be a discussion between the two legislative bodies regarding the outcome of, of the youth summit, which is scheduled for, um, a week from, a week from, um, this, this, this Saturday. So, um, more to come on that. But also, if you could let me know if any of those dates do or don't work. I know I was chit chatting with the mayor a little bit ago and, um, I know he had a conflict with a couple of those dates, but if you could let me know, that would be great. Also, um, uh, we were looking at perhaps making a trip back to Washington DC as we usually do in the February, March timeframe and we're figuring maybe May or June. Um, however, their offices are not still fully opened. But at the same time, we think it is important to kind of get back into the groove of having those regular connections with our mayor and our deputy mayor. And so what we're doing is we're in the process of scheduling Zoom meetings with, um, your federal legislators, our two senators, and of course, our Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland. And we've identified a primary date of May nineteenth with a backup date of either May twenty fourth, twenty fifth or, or, or twenty sixth. So, um, more to follow on that. In the meantime, I'm actually going to be meeting with a couple of local staff members of our two senators, actually tomorrow morning, just to kind of chit chat about, you know, our current priorities and emerging opportunities as, as they may exist. Um, on the library advisory committee, um, between the library and the city, we received thirty eight applications. Actually, I learned, uh, just a little bit ago, the library folks have already gone ahead and appointed, um, their six members. So what we plan on doing now is look to schedule, um, either a Zoom or a hybrid meeting with the subcommittee of this bar, body, which is comprised of, uh, council members, um, Farmer, Bokey and Bell. And, um, have you folks, uh, review the remaining, I guess that would be thirty two and then select six that would then be forwarded to the full body for review, uh, consideration and, and, and full appointment. So we'll try and do that, um, later, you know, sometime this week or early next week. The, the sooner the better. Um, because we'd like to get the committee up and going, um, no later than the early part of the, the first week of, 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 of June, if not, if not sooner. Um, also speaking of the library, the library did reach out to us first thing this morning and let us know that they've decided to close the main Lakewood library, um, in early June, given, as we understand it, some structural and roof issues with the building. And, uh, they are looking, um, to transition to some kind of a short term location, um, in the town center area. They, um, they're, I believe that they're working, um, with, uh, the property owners over there to identify a space. They did communicate that they don't have a lease in place yet, but they're hoping to have one in the early part of, of June. So, um, again, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. They did reach out to their, um, staff late last week to let them know what was going on. And as a part of that, they plan on moving out, you know, all the books and, um, you know, their equipment and, um, computers and, 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 and the like. Also, um, last week, I, I, if, if you recall, I, I commented that, um, Lehigh, the Low Income Housing Institute has an interest of acquiring the Candlewood Suites, which is located on Pacific Highway South here in Lakewood. And, um, use that as a facility for affordable permanent housing, as well as some supportive services, as well as perhaps transitional or breach, uh, bridge housing for, um, both families and, and individuals. Mr. Dave Buhr and I, um, had a chance to meet with their CEO and another one of their, um, uh, key staff, who's actually overseeing Aspen Court. And, um, what we learned is that they are looking to pursue state funding. You know, but think about five, six hundred million dollars has been set aside for these types of acquisitions by the state legislature. They expect that, that application period to open in the July, August timeframe. And so that's where they're geared for. They're also looking at perhaps applying for some Pierce County monies if there's anything available at, 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 at that end. Right now, what we are doing is we are doing our due diligence to identify whether or not what they are proposing is allowed within, uh, uh, under our community standards as identified in our municipal code. The, the property that, that currently exists there is located in a C two, a commercial zone. So, um, again, we're doing our due diligence and, um, we'll be able to notify, um, Lehigh here in the near future, whether or not what they're proposing is either allowed or if it's not allowed. If it's not allowed, they will need to pursue a zoning code text amendment that would then start with the planning commission. And then, of course, make its way up to, um, the city council later, later this summer. We also pointed out that the planning commission and the city council is, um, very busy on a couple of key policy issues, particularly the two thousand twenty two comp plan amendments, as well as the tree preservation code. We also suggested that they reach out to, you know, a number of community stakeholders regarding their, their proposition. And, uh, to include the Korean Women's Association, the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, the Asian Pacific Cultural Center, as well as some key individuals who have been intricately involved. In, um, you know, the, the community, the neighborhood association, a gentleman by the name of Terry Love, as well as the Wuhan family, and, and I'm sure there'll be others as well. So they appreciated that. And, uh, so we have, um, already made some calls to some folks just to let them know that Lehigh will be, will be contacting them regarding what they are proposing over, over in that, over in that area. As it relates to the, um, youth summit, which again is a week from, um, this Saturday, it's on May twenty first from eleven to four PM. You know, the mayor will be, um, doing a, a, a welcome, uh, to kick off, uh, to kick off the event. And I know, um, council members have expressed an interest in, you know, either being involved or, or attending. And, uh, if you are looking for an opportunity to, you know, participate, there are some, um, options. One is first and foremost, um, you know, to, to greet the young people as they, as they come in and to direct them to, you know, they're registered with where to register and things like that, so to serve as greeters. Um, also, there's going to be a couple of key breakout sessions and if members of the council would like to, um, sit in on those, that too can be, can be accommodated. Um, and then later in the afternoon, um, they are going to have some other, um, activities where some chaperones are needed because, um, the school district, it's in a school district facility and, um, under their rules, they do require, um, two adults in, 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 in some of their breakout rooms. So again, if you're interested in any of that, let myself or the city clerk know and, um, we can get you, um, scheduled, um, scheduled to do that. The tree preservation code, so your, um, tree advisory committee has completed their work. Um, it now moves to the planning commission, um, and that will kick off, uh, the planning commission will kick off its review. Actually, they're, they're, they already did. May fourth. And, um, so, uh, the planning commission will actually, uh, touch this, uh, code update at least six times. And that will continue, um, through July. And then they will make a recommendation to the city council. And by the way, they will also host a public hearing. They will then send it to the city council. The city council is expected to begin its review, um, in August. And, um, if, if you stay on task, potentially, um, taking action, um, in early September. And, um, so that's, um, kind of the process. It's, it's moving along. And, um, again, just wanted to give you an update on, on, on the timeline there. Another, um, key item, if you recall, the, uh, Pierce College was, uh, was in meeting with you several weeks ago regarding their proposal to build, um, you know, a, um, a, a, a baseball field at Fort Silicon Park on Field Three. And, uh, you know, they had come in with additional funds to kind of expand the scope of their project. You asked P Rab to look at it. P Rab, um, did hold some, um, meetings. They met on, uh, April twenty sixth and, uh, had a, had a good, robust discussion. And in summary, um, they do support the more enhanced proposal that Pierce College would like to do. However, as it relates to whether it's located on Field Three or Field One, uh, P Rab was literally split down the middle. They thought there were advantages, uh, for both. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And, um, we're going to bring back that material and that information, um, to include some, um, additional slides and, and schematics as part of your May twenty third, um, study session. And we'll also have the chair of P Rab, um, there, at least a representative from P Rab to talk about the process and the discussion that they had and, uh, their recommendation as, as well. The Lakewood, the Lakewood Senior Activity Center, unfortunately, it looks like that, um, the, um, that center will not reopen until later this fall. However, for, for, for good purpose, um, the county is, you know, as you know, that building, it's a county building. So the county is moving forward with hiring a roofing company to replace the roof and fix the, um, exterior leaking, as well as some of the damage that's been caused internal to the building as well. So that work is expected to get underway shortly. And, uh, the goal is, um, for the building to reopen sometime in, 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 in this fall to include, um, again, the Lakewood Senior, Senior Activity Center. The, um, Mary Dodsworth wants me to report that, um, she has applied for, uh, four state grants. And, and these grants are, um, grants that ultimately will be considered as part of the state capital budget. And beginning in January of twenty twenty three. And, um, so again, she's applied for four state grants in support of two projects. One is, uh, transitioning tennis courts at Harry Todd Park into pickleball courts, as well as phase two of Ward's Lake Park. The grants in total are two point four five million dollars. With, uh, the bulk of that, uh, going toward Ward's Lake, about two point one million going toward Ward's Lake, um, Park. Excuse me, phase two, and then that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, toward, uh, the pickleball courts at Harry Todd Park. So that'll go through, um, a review process by, uh, the Washington Recreation and Conservation Office this summer. Ms. Dodsworth and her team will make presentations. Um, undoubtedly, we usually do very, very well there because of Ms. Dodsworth and I am expecting, um, some of those grants to rank at the level where they do make the cutoff for funding, just as she has done in, in the past. Likewise, um, the Public Works Engineering Department, um, Mr. Bucic, our Public Works Engineering Director, uh, submitted five grant applications to PSRC, um, in support of five projects totaling nine point two million dollars. Please note, it's going to be a very, very competitive process. If we can get one or two, um, we think that would be, um, fantastic. The five projects are, um, design and right of way acquisition for one hundred street between Lakewood and South Tacoma Way. The second one is for design on Custer between, uh, Bridgeport and Seventy Fifth, that commercial corridor. The third is, um, uh, design and construction of military. design and construction of military road from Edgewood to 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 one twelve to actually continue where Washington Boulevard is going to leave off. The the fourth is South Tacoma Way, the last segment of South Tacoma Way between Eighty-Eighth and Eightieth over in the International District. And that's for construction since design is well underway. And then the fifth one is an overlay project, one twelve along which between South Tacoma Way and Steel Street, which kind of cuts across over by where the where the cleared, North Clear Zone, North Clear Zone is. And that's for design and construction. So again, five projects totaling nine point two million dollars. We should know sometime later this summer in terms of where our rankings come out within Pierce County. And then awards are made later, 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 later this fall. Of course, we'll keep you appraised of that. In addition to the Youth Summit, as it relates to your calendar on May twenty first, the Youth Fishing Event at American Lake Park is going to be happening this Saturday from ten to one, one P M. So if you want to see a bunch of happy kids sticking their fishing poles in the water and pulling out some fish, you should go down and check it out. It's always a very, very fun event. So with that, Mayor, that's that's my report.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Caulfield, Deputy Mayor Moss, and Councilmember Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, Mr. Caulfield, what were the dates that you offered for their meeting with the superintendent?
The dates are June fourteen, June fifteen, or June twenty nine, Deputy Mayor?
Twenty nine, okay.
I had nineteen.
Thank you.
My froggy voice. Somebody said it was froggy. I got a froggy voice today. I apologize for that.
Mr. Caulfield, thank you for the update on the tree preservation work. Remind me, is there is there any information about the outreach? The the vendor-conducted outreach that we've got going on around tree preservation, or is it?
I don't I don't have it in front of me, but let me follow up and let me get you the specifics on that, Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you.
I I do know that there's going to be a couple of events planned as well. But let me follow up with some more specifics for you, Councilmember.
Just had a couple of follow-ups, Mr. Caulfield, on the library closure. I I know they're looking for interim space somewhere in the city, as you've mentioned. Did the director indicate any opportunity for the bookmobile, if they have one, to perhaps be available? Because when I was a kid, the bookmobile was a big deal. And kids could go and check out books for the summer, especially if it's going to be closed during the summertime. It'd be nice to know if they've got solid plans in place to provide access for folks who need to get some extracurricular reading in.
Yeah, Mayor Whalen, their their plan is actually to 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 move to a different storefront. So they plan still to have the libraries expected to be open. I could I could inquire about what the status of their bookmobile is. I think that's a separate standalone that they that they have.
And then with regard to the county building in which we've had the senior center housed, are we paying rent on that right now or not?
We 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 are we are not. Mayor Whalen, as a matter of fact, we have not been paying rent for that for a couple of years since COVID kicked off. And even when we were supposed to be paying rent, the the county said no need to. And then they began to transition. And if you recall, their Superior Court activities, and then they were like, yeah, definitely, you're not paying rent. And so one of the key initiatives that we're going to have to do is since the lease agreement expired at the end of twenty twenty is we're going to have to have another lease agreement. And so hopefully, we'll be able to bring that forward to you, you know, well in advance of 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 the building being fixed and being reopened. So right now, there is no lease agreement.
Glad to hear we didn't get a pay or vacate notice from the county, so that's good.
No, and actually, the county, I will say, Mayor Whalen, you know, the county's been, you know, very, very responsive to us. And, you know, they they've been, you know, good to us in terms of keeping us appraised and, you know, not trying to squeeze any extra money out of it. Actually, you know, they've they've, you know, quite frankly, you know, provided us a benefit by not requiring us to pay when perhaps we should have.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Caulfield? Well, thank you, and get well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
Great. We'll we'll chat about it amongst ourselves and figure out what works best, and then you can report on the meeting tonight. Updates from that someday. Okay, let's turn to reports by the, or excuse me, City Council comments. And as you're thinking about it, give a thumbs up on one of the three dates or the potential joint school board, city council meet and greet. I don't want to call it a meeting per se because we're trying to make it a little bit more informal so we can have a flowing discussion out of the youth council. The best date for me is the twenty ninth, if I can plant that seed. Yeah, hint hint. That's what it is. So think about that as you go through. Yeah, yeah, the twenty ninth would be a Wednesday, right? So in any event, as you're thinking about that, how about Mr. Bokey, Council comments? I know you're fine, but what about no, no comments? Okay, all right. Councilmember Bell?
I don't have any comments, but I am great with the twenty ninth. That works for me.
Great. Ms. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to report that we had our executive board for the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners on Friday that the mayor attended with me as well. And the executive board voted to welcome DuPont. City of DuPont is our number fifteen member city of shape, so I'm excited about that. And we reviewed the draft work plan that a small subgroup worked on. And I believe we're going to be bringing the Shape Manager, Jason Gautier, to our retreat on the thirty first. So you guys will get a presentation. I think we're going to need twenty minutes at least, so. So you'll get to see it soon. We're on budget, and we're looking to hire the halftime F T E in Q three or Q four and supplement with Pierce County staff time in the meantime. So it's it's very good, and I'm okay with the twenty ninth as well.
Mr. Anderson?
Maybe defined by my absence here. Unfortunately, I'll be able to make the Youth Council, Youth Summit, I'll be at a four-year-old's birthday party in San Diego. With respect to the joint meeting with the school board, the twenty ninth's good for me. I will be out of state June fourth to twelfth and June fifteenth to twentieth. So there's a narrow window in there. One of the dates, at least one of the dates was mentioned in that window, plus twenty ninth, I'd be okay. I had the opportunity to reintroduce to Shape Manager, Jason. He was wandering around Pierce County Human Services Building when I was interviewing somebody over there. And he he reminded me that we had met when Doug Richardson and I had great smiles on our faces as we were tearing down a fishing shack with, I guess, Mary was there too, fishing shack with a excavator till it come. Wednesday, Mayor and City Manager were there, but I had the opportunity to participate in a press conference with the Speaker of the House and two members of Congress, two tribal chairman. And there's a couple of interesting things about that. It was, you know, focused on the Infrastructure Act, and it was at the Chambers Bay Dam. But just as a reminder for council, Lakewood is one of three parties to Chambers Creek Properties Master Plan. So we are a signatory to a cooperative planning and zoning agreement with University Place in Pierce County. And although relatively little of that area is within Lakewood, we're in many ways a co-equal participant in the interlocal agreement. The prospective removal of the dam and reconstruction of the bridge will likely cause the tidal flow to impact some areas within Lakewood. And another interesting sidelight, a follow-up to that meeting with actually our our lobbyist, Brianna Murray, who's representing the folks who bought the Abitibi property, or I think they actually flew clothes from George, whoever it was, because they were the financier. They're interested in getting the creek that runs from Garrison Springs to Chambers into public ownership and having it restored and rehabilitated. Garrison Springs is actually inside the city of Lakewood on Western State Property. It's in the back behind the old golf course, kind of downhill from the old golf course site tucked in there, so very environmentally sacred. But it comes down the, it comes down the bank somehow. Goes down that steep, that slope, and comes down into Chambers Creek before the bay. And so that, if I'm I'm going to meet with my county hat on, meet with her and her clients about their interest in the dam itself. But they seem to want to have things restored and and do some good things with the property that can't be used for development. And so we may be asked to be a participant with respect to that. That's all I have. Great.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did, I I did attend the school board meeting this afternoon, and there was no questions. I was able to give the presentation based off of the new talking points that we received. So everything went really good. I did let them know that we had heard that Chief Saro was going to retire, and there was a lot of sadness for that. So but other than that, no questions.
So starting at the at the top of that page, if the manager is still available, it looks like we're okay with June twenty nine as the joint meeting. And what I would suggest we do, if we're going to have it kind of informal with dinner opportunity and some mingling space, let's see if we can do it out of the pavilion in the park. Because we can have tables out there, we can set up catered, you know, food, make it simple. If that works, I think that would be good. It's better than this location. I just, that would be a better location. You can get forty people in there pretty easily. Yeah, yeah. So you're you're good to go with the tables and such. Great. So the twenty ninth is set for that. Just a couple of things. The Connections Magazine is coming out soon. I offered to take an initial draft at it. It's due later this week. I thought it was going to be due last Friday. So luckily, Mr. Caulfield gave me a break, and so we've got a little extra time. So I'll try to circulate that this week. Again, kind of basic focus on all things spring with an overview of some housing initiatives and issues as we head into our retreat. The participation in Shape and the direction from Vision twenty fifty to plan for an increased population target here in Lakewood, which, of course, comes with a housing component. So it'll be along those lines. Coffee Houses, Community Coffee House with the mayor is going to be set for Thursday, the twenty sixth of May. And the topic is going to be housing and homelessness. We're going to have some guest speakers to create a panel. Steve O'Ban from the county will will come and present a little bit of his overview with community first. So he'll be a panelist. Jason Gautier will be from Shape. He'll present a bit of what we're doing with regard to regional planning for increased housing capacity. I'm going to be asking that Jan Hutchins from Lhasa make an appearance on the panel as well. And I believe we'll have a staff member or two, including perhaps a B C T behavioral contact team member there. So we can really run the gamut from the homelessness issues that are top of mind, as well as the strata of housing needs and how we're going to direct our attention to accomplish, you know, our goals in that arena, from the low-income affordable housing to middle-income housing and other market rate housing. So it should be a good event. And it'll be at the pavilion, I believe, again, from six to seven thirty on Thursday, May twenty sixth. I will work with Mr. Copriva, our communications manager, to make sure that we have it well communicated with some of those panelists. So it'll entice more folks to participate because we hope it'll be informative and a good opportunity for questions. On the fourth last week, as Councilmember Anderson indicated, I attended the event with Congresswoman Strickland, in which Speaker Pelosi came to talk about all things infrastructure and improvements in the area, including the bridge work that Mr. Anderson spoke of. It was an interesting event and glad to be there. On the fifth, the next day, I attended the Law Enforcement Memorial out at in the Parkland area. Again, well-attended. It was certainly a somber event, and it was good to reflect on the sacrifices so many have made for really decades. Because they go back to, you know, the nineteen forties, and every service member from the Washington State Patrol and other surrounding cities in in the Pierce County area have the losses they've suffered over those those years. And there's a tolling of the bell and a remembrance of each individual, so that was that was good. Councilmember Farmer addressed the Shape meeting we had last week. It was a good meeting, and Mr. Gautier is going to be coming to present, as she indicated, during our council retreat on Saturday. In response to many of your encouragement, I showed up to the Hunger Walk for Emergency Food Network and was able to open the event, looking around as best I could to find any one of you to walk with me. But she was, Michelle Douglas is very appreciative that the city was represented. And I have my green shirt to prove it, so but they had over five hundred registrants, I believe, and they had plenty of sponsorship, so they were pretty excited. Again, I I waved a magic wand and made the rain disappear for at least two hours so that they could do the the walk without being dumped on by the rain. It was a great use of the pavilion, by the way. That was a wonderful opportunity to see that asset in use. They had a band there. It was used for announcements. It was a gathering place for all of the walkers to be there. That's where they gathered after the walk. You know, it's really a great space for that kind of stuff. So they were very thankful. The musicians thanked us for putting that pavilion together because they just give great praises to it. Twenty first coming up. We've got a lot of events. We've got the Youth Council Summit. And I'll be doing a little presentation there. I'm thinking through kind of the the theme. But it's going to be something akin to creating your place at the table, the community table. So it's going to be an encouragement piece and, you know, a little imagery. So if you're going to show up, it should be kind of a fun day. Encourage you to do so. And then later that evening, if you haven't already signed up for the virtual Rotary Auction, please do. It should be a very fun event as well, and all that money goes back into the community. And then one final comment. Last week, I attended the Rotary Luncheon on Friday. Councilmember Anderson was there as well. It was a presentation by a young woman who's a student at Pierce College, who's from Ukraine. And she came here four months ago to start her education in the United States, leaving her family with, you know, great warm thoughts of coming home to a family life that was as she left it. And, you know, shortly thereafter, of course, things changed. Her commentary was incredible, not just commentary, but it was really a presentation about what the people in her city and in her country are experiencing and the atrocities. And it was, it was a tough one. And she is in need of some some help, so Rotary is likely going to be raising some funds for her because of the way the scholarship stuff works at Pierce College. They can't get money out from Ukraine. Her her father's in the war. Her mother's trying to keep things going. So there may be some opportunity at the auction coming up to raise the paddle to support Anastasia and her continuing education here, because she may not be able to go home for for your time. So I don't know if you wanted to say something about that. Dancing in the Streets function as well at the Colonial Plaza. Yeah, please let your friends and family know about that as well, that afternoon. The first Dancing in the Street opportunity from four to eight P M, I believe. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, the the presentation by Anastasia was phenomenal. All all five feet tall and maybe twenty years old, lover. Excellent language skills. Set the stage. She had a PowerPoint and video clip. She had a PowerPoint and video clip presentation that was worthy of the communications director at the embassy the way it had been put together and her personal connections. She's lost a grandparent in this. Her her brother returned to the country to fight. Her father's fighting. And there was a an email today that they're going to pass a hat Friday to start off a fund to help her pay for her education.
I'm trying to work with some local law firms and other businesses because her tuition needs are like, according to Connie Coleman Lackety on behalf of the sister city, she's kind of engaged in that. It's like thirty-six hundred dollars a quarter, so I think we should be able to raise enough money to get her through the next few quarters and some living expenses. So anyway, I agree with you. It was one of those really poignant hours, and there were very few dry eyes in that entire.
Presentation at Metal Park today, it was more or less for LMCC, and that was the topic. And it was saying how somber and how desperate this child is and how much they would like to help her. So I think if they pass a hat, they're going to get a lot of help.
If we can save one matters, so. All right, well, there's nothing else further for tonight. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.